Operator error there. Anyway, the hour being 7:01 PM on March 8th, 2021. Like the call to order the Laconia City Council meeting. Prior to beginning, I'd ask for your forbearance as I read the introduction for electronic meetings. As Mayor of the Laconia City Council, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this Board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members have the ability to communicate during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to watch the live YouTube video at www.youtube.com/laconianh. Listen to this meeting through dialing the following phone number: 1-646-558-8656, or participate by the Zoom app. Webinar ID: 810-190-4015, password: 295-800. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided on the City of Laconia's website at www.laconianh.gov. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 527-1265, extension 243, or email at cityclerk@laconianh.gov, and adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll, call, vote. So let's start the meeting by taking a roll-call attendance. When each member states his presence, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. I'll ask the City Clerk, Cheryl Hebert, to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Home and Alone.
Counselor Susie?
Home and Alone.
Counselor Littman?
Home and Alone.
Counselor Haynes?
Here at City Hall and alone.
Counselor Hamel?
Home and Alone.
Counselor Felch?
At home and alone.
Mayor Hosmer?
At City Hall in the Mayor's office and alone. So, thank you very much. Before we go any further, I'd ask Counselor Littman if he would be so kind as to lead us in the salute of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands unnationed under God, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you, Counselor Littman. Reporting Secretary this evening is the aforementioned City Clerk, Cheryl Hebert. We're also joined this evening by City Manager Scott Myers, and I believe helping us on the IT end of things is Finance City Finance Manager Glenn Smith. Moving right along to number 7A on this evening's agenda, which is the regular meeting minutes of February 22nd, 2021. Minutes of the meeting were distributed to the City Council on Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. One correction was submitted to the clerk of the minutes were redistributed to the council on Wednesday, February 24th, 2021. With one correction submitted to the clerk, the minutes will be accepted as redistributed. On your agenda this evening under 8A was the, we had planned to have the 2020 fiscal year audit and comprehensive annual financial report. If I'm not mistaken, that has been postponed till later in the month, or is it next month, City Manager?
We should be looking to have that for you on the 22nd. We just ran to a couple of finalizing just narratives and getting the documents prepared in order to get them to you ahead of time for the weekend and just didn't occur as quickly as we hoped, so we'll have them on the 22nd.
Thank you very much. The Caffrey will be on the 22nd. For those of you tuning in for that, I'm sorry to disappoint, but we'll get back after it. So moving along to number 10 on our agenda this evening, which is citizens' comments for matters not on the agenda. If citizens have tuned in and there's something they would like to address the council about or concerning, and it's not on tonight's agenda, now would be the appropriate time. I'd encourage you to raise your hand, and Mr. Smith will acknowledge you, and you can speak.
Mr. Mayor, Charlie St. Clair has raised his hand.
Welcome, Mr. St. Clair.
Welcome, or I was going to say welcome. Thank you very much, everybody. I just wanted to say a few words about Motorcycle Week this year. As you may know, we're all planning to have the rally in June, June 12th through the 20th. And, you know, I know there's some decisions to be made about that. We all know that we're in a fluid situation where the vaccines getting out there, and it seems like the news changes from day to day, but mainly all good news. For the most, I know there are some states that are maybe jumping the gun with some of their orders. But what I'm asking, representing the entire Board of Directors tonight, is that the council hold off on any hard decisions to the second meeting in April to make the final plans as to what or how Motorcycle Week will look this June. I'm fully aware that it may be like last August's rally. That's, I understand that. I just think that making any decision now or in the near future might be premature, again because of the way the vaccines are being rolled out. We've heard some great things recently. I think the total number of people in the country that have gotten at least one shot is approaching 90 million people. And it seems like things, well, you guys all follow the news, so it does like things are moving along in a very good direction. Obviously, if things should take a turn for the worse between now and the end of April, or for that matter, in May, we could just make that decision and go with whatever the state says, and for that matter, what you guys say here in Laconia. So that's really what I want to say. I'm looking forward to things improving. I know we all are, and I think they are, and again, I just am encouraging the council to make any hard decisions for this June, no sooner than, well, you can make them now, but at least if it has to be scaled back or it can be improved to make it that second meeting in April. So for that, I thank you all for your time. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. St. Clair. Appreciate your time this evening.
There a participant identified as Parade Road has raised a hand.
Hello, Parade Road.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you very well. Who are we speaking with?
Angela Smith.
Hello, Angela. Glad you could join us tonight.
Hi, I just wanted to bring up to the council. My husband and I live on 3254 Parade Road. Our driveway is almost directly across from Roller Coaster Road. And the speed limit here is 50 miles an hour, and we feel that that is just a little bit too high considering the amount of traffic that comes out of Roller Coaster, also considering how hard it is to see out of the driveway or out of the Roller Coaster when pulling out onto 106. And there's also a passing lane right in this area, which is not safe as far as we're concerned. We've been here quite a few years now, and we've seen a lot of accidents, and we're wondering what we could do about this, lowering it to some point and possibly getting rid of the passing lane.
Thanks very much, Ms. Smith. Appreciate you calling in. I can't give you a direct response to that right now. I'm not sure what the process is. I do believe, though, it's in Counselor Cheney's ward, if I'm not mistaken, and perhaps it's something we can circle back and discuss and have that discussion. Would you be open to that, Counselor Cheney?
I am, Mayor. I would point out that both I and Representative at that time, Charlie St. Clair, approached the state because the decision about speed limits or passing zones on that portion of Parade Road are a decision to be made by the state, not by the city. We have asked that that be looked at, and I'll be happy to check into it and get back to the constituent as soon as I get an answer.
Thank you. That would be wonderful, and I will follow up with whatever means is the best route to go.
So do you have Counselor Cheney's contact information, Ms. Smith?
Yes, I do, actually.
Okay, great.
Check in with him. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for joining us.
Megan has her hand raised.
Hello, Megan.
Can you hear me?
Very well. How are you?
I'm great. I hope you guys are doing well tonight.
Sure. Who is this? It's Megan?
Megan Doptas, General Manager of the Big House Tower Hill Tavern and Weir's Beach Tattoo Shop.
Nice to hear from you again.
Wonderful to hear from you guys, too, and be able to talk and let you know a couple of things that I'm thinking. You know, we've been discussing a bunch of things, considering, you know, Bike Week. We have some thoughts and concerns regarding all of it because of the transition in the positivity percentage due to all the vaccinations and stuff. We've been discussing that making the decision today about the future of this year's rally is opportune, inopportune, excuse me, at best. With the administration of all the three different vaccines, Hampshire has already hit 17% of the population, which is 340,000 residents. And as the number of vaccinated people increases, the test positivity rate will also continue to decrease. That number is already lowered to 3.7% versus where we were at at one point of 11.4% just months ago. And much of the current positivity also is from long-term care facilities still. So on the list of the vaccine administrations, I was looking at different things of our neighboring states, all ranking between second and eighth in the country, except for Mass, which falls a little behind in ranking. But they're putting plans into place and enacting them to rapidly increase the numbers. And I guess what I'm trying to express is, and request that you take into consideration, is kind of the same thing that Charlie said, just giving the topic a pause and maybe revisit it a couple of weeks from now and let, you know, give it time to let the vaccinations catch up with the population, and so we can all be safer. We're aware of everything that's involved with it and have been successful as much as possible and safe and not had one issue at Tower Hill or the Big House or the Tattoo Shop in the last year at all with Liquor Commission or anything, or the Attorney General's Office, and keeping people safe, and will continue to do that. But maybe we can talk about it again instead of now where everything's still really uncertain.
Thank you, Megan. Once again, thanks for taking the time to join us and share your thoughts, and I'm glad things have overall gone well and certainly seem to have a high degree of professionalism and responsibility. So thank you for the work that you continue to do.
Thanks for saying that. It means a lot.
Mr. Mayor, Jose DeMatos has raised his hand.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, Mr. DeMatos. How are you?
I'm mute. Here we go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. How are you?
I'm doing great, thank you. Glad you could join us.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, lady and gentlemen. This comes with a bit of deja vu. I feel like I was here about 12 months ago or 13 months ago. It's a little deja vu feeling now, but it's come to my attention that there may have been some discussions amongst our city manager, city employee, department heads, and perhaps some state personnel regarding this scheduled and advertised 98th anniversary of Laconia Motorcycle Week, scheduled for June 12th to the 20th, 2021. These meetings may have had some agreement to not support the event to take place this June. Please note that I respectfully request that our elected officials, specifically our city councilors, show their undivided and even if need to be, perhaps conditional support of this great event to take place for those scheduled dates. The economic suffering and damage from over one year of COVID-19 to our local hospitality businesses, especially in our Weir's Beach area, must begin to turn around, become positive, and be supported 100% by our city as soon as possible for their survival and well-being. Ourselves, we have no vacancy for Bike Week already, with all half deposits being received on all the cottages for the scheduled time of the event. According to the CDC, our society has had continuous daily improvement of COVID cases, hospitalizations, and deaths since the end of the last holiday surge months ago. As mentioned, over 92.4 million doses of COVID-19 vaccine have been administered to nearly one-third of the population of the United States. 2.16 million vaccinations are being given each day, with close to 100 days until Motorcycle Week. That would be over another 200 million of the population being protected. Along with the 90 million already, we'll be really close to everyone being vaccinated. New guidelines just released today by the Centers of Disease Control have relaxed the advised time of fully vaccinated people being able to safely gather without masks and without physical distancing. That was today. The event has been scheduled, advertised, with many guests and businesses planning and looking forward to Motorcycle Week this June of this year, 2021. These businesses and guests should not need to alter their plans. This is March of 2021, not March of 2020. Many in our society have accepted and adjusted to all the COVID requirements, guidelines. And with those guidelines and requirements, Motorcycle Week, June 12th to the 20th, 2021, should be supported by our city and allowed to take place in as close to normal manner as possible. I urge you to follow the science. Thank you for your understanding, your time, cooperation with this extremely vital issue.
Thank you for joining us, Mr. DeMatos.
Mr. Mayor, no one else has raised a hand.
Thank you so much. Mr. DeMatos, if you can make sure to mute as well. So moving along to item number 11 on this evening's agenda. We have Laura Ringer requesting appointment as a regular member of the Parks and Recreation Commission to a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2024. There is currently one vacant regular member position on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Interviews of individuals applying for appointment or reappointment to various boards and commissions will be held at this meeting. Appointments will be made at the council's March 22nd, 2021 meeting. So moving along, all of us, all of you councilors have Ms. Ringer's application. And Ms. Ringer, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
I can hear you very well. Thanks for applying. Thanks for joining us. Maybe if you can tell us just a couple of things about yourself, as well as why you're applying for appointment to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm retired. I'm up here with my husband. Our son is still living with us. He recently graduated from Plymouth State this past May. We absolutely love anything outdoors. We are smitten with the Laconia, the Lake Regions, and just, I'm sure, in general. Have been working my entire life, have enjoyed the outdoors camping and everything, and I'm at a point where I can give back. And my wonderful neighbor reached out to me and told me about this opportunity, and this just sounded like a wonderful opportunity to be able to help out.
Terrific. What did you do prior to, did you say your retirement?
I am. I'm retired. I worked at Pfizer for 32 years.
Congratulations on your retirement, as well as 32 years. That's superb. Well, I didn't, I didn't think I'd hear the word "smitten" tonight. I think that's great. Conjures up something really positive about our community, so I'm so pleased that you are loving it here and you want to get involved. I'd look to my fellow councilors to see if they have any questions or comments on your application. Counselor Felch?
Hello, Laura.
Hello there.
We are neighbors, and I just wanted to thank you for stepping up and applying for this position.
No, my pleasure. Thank you.
Not seeing any other questions or comments from other councilors? Yeah, that's a pretty, that's pretty easy. Right. Well, you did such a great job introducing yourself. And anyway, so as you heard, we will, appointments will be made at our next meeting on March 22nd. And once again, I want to say thank you for your willingness to serve the City of Laconia and apply for this position. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're very, very welcome. Thank you.
Take care.
You, too. Have a wonderful night.
Next up is our friend Charlie St. Clair requesting a reappointment as the Planning Board Representative on the Historic District Commission to a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2024. Mr. St. Clair is currently a regular member on the Historic District Commission as Planning Board Representative. His term expires at the end of March 2021, and he is requesting reappointment. At their February 4th, 2021 meeting, the Planning Board reaffirmed their wish for Mr. St. Clair to represent them on the Historic District Commission. As indicated earlier, interviews are this evening, and appointments will be made on March 22nd at the council's regular meeting. So, Mr. St. Clair, are you still with us?
I am. I am. And I, as I've said before, it's really an honor to be on the Planning Board from the way I look at it, and I think I've been doing a good job, and I'd like to continue it for another three years. And of course, as we all know, there's always the money involved, so it's a great deal, great deal. A little humor there. It's...
Keep your day job, Charlie. Anyway, Charlie, on all sincerity, though, thank you for your continued service to the City of Laconia and your willingness to always raise your hand when something like this comes up. I know you put your heart and your soul into everything that you do in the city, and it's greatly appreciated. I'd look to my fellow councilors to see if they have any questions or comments for Mr. St. Clair. Is that you, Mr. Haynes? Counselor Haynes? And you're on mute.
Yes. Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. Charlie's done a great job and brought a lot to that District Commission, so I would urge that he be reappointed.
Thank you, Counselor Haynes. And I think Counselor Cheney would indicate that he wears great ties as well, so. Seeing no other questions or comments, Charlie, thanks again, and I'm sure we'll be in touch before then.
Thank you all. Thank you.
That's 11B. Nominations, Appointments, and Elections under 12A. This is the Mayor's reappointment of Captain Chad Valancourt to the Highway Safety Commission to a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2024. In accordance with Chapter 41 of the City Ordinances, members of the Highway Safety Commission are appointed at the recommendation of the mayor with the approval of City Council. Captain Valancourt's current term representing the Fire Department expires at the end of March 2021, and he has agreed to be reappointed to that, to the commission. So at this point, I'd be looking for a motion to move to reappoint Captain Chad Valancourt to the Highway Safety Commission to a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2024. So made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Susie. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative. That motion passes, and congratulations to Captain Valancourt, and thank you for your willingness to serve as well. Excuse me. Moving along to number 12B, which is the Mayor's reappointment of Counselor Henry Littman to the Highway Safety Commission to a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2024. In accordance with Chapter 41 of the City Ordinances, members of the Highway Safety Commission are appointed at the recommendation of the mayor with the approval of the council. Counselor Littman's current term representing the medical profession expires at the end of March 2021, and he has agreed to be reappointed to the commission. At this time, I'd be looking for a motion to reappoint Counselor Henry Littman to the Highway Safety Commission to a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2024. So made by Counselor Haynes and seconded by Counselor Cheney. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney? Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
That's six votes in the affirmative. The motion passes. Congratulations, Counselor Littman, and thank you for your willingness to serve. That takes us up to number 15, which is the Mayor's Report. And there are a couple of things I'd like to raise for discussion this evening. But first, let me, I know this is, the council is aware of this, and the public has been made aware of it as well, but I think some some great news for the City of Laconia in that our, the property at 30 Church Street, which is Buzzill House, a historic structure that served as the rectory for St. Joseph's, purchased by the city. I can't remember the exact date, probably less than a year or so ago, but we put it up for sale. We had a handful of interesting offers, certainly, and there were a number of people that put a lot of thought into proposals as to what the property would, they intended to use the property for. But I'm happy to report that we have entered, the city's entered into a purchase and sale agreement with Mandy and Ian Hagan, owners of Rawl's Septic in Northfield, I believe. The city had an asking price and listed it for $450,000. The offer that was accepted was for $480,000. I also want to let the record reflect that the council requested a couple of stipulations that were agreed to, which is the Hagans indicated that the structure would be used for residential purposes and/or a home office for them as well. The city also requested and received a right of first refusal if the Hagans at some point make a determination they'd like to sell the property. If they have a bona fide offer in hand, the city has the right to write a first refusal on that offer as well. So also, what came along with the purchase was the four parking spots on the library side of the building. So, you know, it was our intention, I think, when we purchased that parcel of land, we had an idea of what we would like to sell that piece of property for, and... We had an idea of what we would like to sell that piece of property for, and that way lowering the city's obligation when it came to the total purchase price of that land. And certainly, I think we're perhaps exceeded our expectations a bit, and I think that's great news. So I just want to say thank you to the city manager and to Steve Weeks, who represented the city in the realtor. I think what we'd be looking for at some point here would be to authorize the city manager to sign the closing documents. We'd be looking to do that, I believe. Would that be an agenda item on March twenty second? Scott? Yes, okay. So having, he was previously authorized to sign the purchase and sale agreement on behalf of, of the city. Something else I had to mention there too, Scott, I forget. Did we cover everything on that?
I think you're good.
Okay, thank you. Moving along to I think many of you have been made aware that the governor has released his, his recommendation for the state budget recently. And as a trailer bill, HB two came out, I believe it was the end of the previous week, about a week or so ago, maybe a little bit longer, but we've had an opportunity to sort of comb through HB two, which is a number of specific provisions in regards to the state. One of the items that frankly, I was surprised to, to learn of, which was the sale of the Lakes Region Facility, which is also known as the Lakes Region, excuse me, which is known as the Laconia State School property. The provision within HB two authorizes the government, governor and the executive council to possess sole authority to sell or lease this property. If, if it were to become law, and it's a long ways from becoming that right now, but if it were to become law, this authorization would override any other provision of law. And the reason that I was, I was sort of surprised to find out about this is because I think we've all been somewhat familiar with Lake Shore Redevelopment Planning Commission, which was organized in, in twenty seventeen. The city had representation on the, on this commission. It's having attended a number of their hearings. And I know Counsel Chini has been in attendance as well. They have put, they've been very methodical and thoughtful in their approach to this property. I think the work they've done has significantly enhanced the value of the property. It's answered a number of questions and concerns about the quality of the soil on the property, as well as the quality of the structures and maybe what needs to be done in regards to remediation. And they also put together with an engineering firm, a thoughtful approach as to in developing this property, they have really prioritized the idea of having a self-sustaining economic, self-sustaining economic development and job creation for the benefit of the city of Laconia, Belknap County in New Hampshire. I think they have really executed their responsibilities quite well. And of course, we know that a funding request from the last year was met with a veto. But I also know that they continue to do their work. They requested an allocation of about three hundred fifty thousand dollars for this year to continue their work. And I think their work is really, when all said and done, will endure to the benefit of the city of Laconia and Belknap County. Unfortunately, certainly, the process within HB two excludes Laconia and somewhat marginalizes in my, from my personal perspective, the interests of the city on this property has a long and storied history. I think, I look at it as a transformational piece of property that really will serve generations to come. So I'd be interested in just having a discussion. I know some of the thoughts have been shared with you as to where I'm coming from. I'd just be interested to have that discussion right now if someone would like to speak up or not as to what we should do about this and really what your, what your feelings are as a, as a council. Counsel Chini?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I was deeply disturbed when I found out about this. I agree with what you've said about the commission and the efforts they've put in. And a group of people who had, no, most of them don't even live in the area, and yet they put in a lot of hard work to try and come up with a great plan for that property. I'm hoping that the Senate will delete this portion of HB two. I'm hoping that the Senate President particularly will take umbrage at this attempt to take this out of, out of a design for everybody and make it, I think, a property for a select few. Any effort the city can make to object to this, I would, I would support wholeheartedly. I hope the council is willing to go on record as being in opposition to this. What I think is, is a horrible decision on the part of the governor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Chini. Counsel Susie, did I see your hand raised as well? Counsel Susie, if you're speaking, I can't, I can't see your mouth, but you are on mute.
Okay, now, first, I totally support Counsel Chini said. Secondly, usually as listening in on our meetings, our participants are some members of the state legislature. And I would like, you know, understand what role they might play in this. I assume they're going to have to vote on it at some point. I'd also like to hear from our executive counselor, Kenny, since he's going to be part of this final group. What is his position on this? And explain to us what is the meaning behind it? What was the purpose of all of this? But I agree with you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel Chini, that I'd be in favor in saying, you know, this is totally, where's the city of Laconia involved in this thing? I mean, we've always been, as you said, Mr. Mayor before, I think you said in the recorded newspaper, we got left behind in this whole process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Susie. Counsel Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my suggestion is that the mayor, I want to make sure you're hearing me. Mayor, are you hearing me?
Yeah, I can hear you very well, yes.
Okay. My suggestion for the council is rather than to lob in a, a letter or take a a position that strong is to first try to enter into some conversations with the governor's office and with our legislative leaders. You know, the practical reality is that even if the commission was unfettered in terms of what its work was going to be, it would still have to go back to the governor and council for decision making. So I think in terms of rather than sort of exchanging sort of perspectives through letters is, I think, an in-person meeting to try to get a sense of what what the governor's thoughts are on that and what our other representatives, whether they be in the Senate or the House, and see what we can learn more about this before taking a, a firm position on it.
Thank you, Counsel Littman. I certainly hear what you're saying loud and clear, and I respect your, your position, Counsel Littman. I have no problem with trying to be diplomatic and, and making, taking some steps for some outreach and some productive dialogue. I know there's value in that, but I do believe in, in a situation like this where what bothered me, and I don't want to react to this from a more emotional level, but I think all of us, and I think the commission itself was blindsided by it. And, you know, and it's, it's, it is a very strong and aggressive provision within HB two, which, you know, I, and that, that degree of force that was used in writing it and putting it in HB two, my feeling is that, you know, diplomacy may only go so far. And, you know, I think when someone tries to, in my perspective, from my perspective, sort of roll over the city of Laconia and what's in its best interest and eliminate them from the decision and make input process here, you know, part of me wants to push back harder and stand up for ourselves and the residents of the city. You know, we can always resort to diplomacy at some point here, but I, I think a very strong stand in establishing that we won't be rolled over in this instance might be the proper approach to this. We can certainly hold off on, on and continue to discuss this, but I'd hate to see it last too long without a very strong response from the city.
Mr. Mayor, I just think that the first thing ought to be is to make sure that we understand the whole picture before taking a strong position. And I don't think we have to hesitate to, to set those things up. And I think, you know, I would encourage us to, to get more information and have some dialogue the next week so that we can take a better position and more informed position on the twenty second, or even if before, if we need to.
Counsel Hamel, you're unmuted. Did you want to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with you and, you know, Counsel Chini on this. You know, if everybody remembers back quite a while now, the city actually offered to buy that property and was refused. It was actually offered to the county for a lesser amount, and they didn't take it either. So, you know, I, I think dialogue goes both ways. It would have been nice of the governor to, or the executive council to approach Laconia and say, this is our thoughts. What do you think? So I, I think dialogue can go both ways, and I think at this point, it looks like they've made their decision. And I think what Counsel Susie said about having the executive counselor, Kenny, come to one of our meetings and, you know, see what he knows about it, maybe before the letter would go to the governor. But, you know, I, I think Laconia has for a long time been kind of been disregarded on this property. And, you know, when it was the state school, then it became the prison. And right now, in current use, it's being used for something else that we weren't too thrilled about, but it's happening. So I think I don't mind some dialogue here, especially with our executive counselor. At this point, he must be in the front row seat to know what's going on. And I wouldn't mind going that route, but I think Laconia needs to stand up and you know, decide its future on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hamel.
If I could just, Mayor, where we are in the process here, HB two is the governor's proposal. It has to go through the House. It has to go through the Senate. Counsel Kenny, certainly it'd be good to speak with him, but his, if you will, ability to imprint on that would be after the legislation, not, not before it in terms of, if I understand what the, what HB two contains would be that, you know, the decision would be solely in the court of the governor and council. But until the legislation's enacted, that's why I suggest that we, we dialogue first as opposed to, you know, take a position before we know exactly where this is going. Certainly, we should take a position that we're, we're interested in Laconia's interest being protected. There's no doubt about that, but I guess the issue in terms of if you're trying to affect the, the potential course of HB two, I think Counsel Kenny's position and Counsel Kenny would be in the later phases of this after the legislation was enacted. So just want to make sure everybody's aware of the process that's going on here.
You know, I would, I would agree, Counsel Littman. I think keeping him in, letting him know what we're, what we're discussing and why we're in a position that we're in is one thing, but you're, you're right, it's sort of after the fact, after the legislation has been signed into law. Yes, Counsel Haynes, I'm sorry, Counsel Hamel, you were saying something?
Yeah, I, you know, I think that's all great, but I would really like to know where Counsel Kenny's position is on, I mean, Executive Counsel Kenny's position is on this, actually before the ball gets rolling. And is, he should be able to tell us that.
Fair enough. Counsel Haynes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess what concerns me is when the request from the commission was vetoed by the governor or that omnibus bill said that there was too many things and it was too confusing, and, and I'm paraphrasing this. But then again, now we, now we have this other surprise. I, I respect Counsel Littman very much and his approach, but at some point in time, we've got to have our feelings made known. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Haynes. Counsel Felch, go ahead. You haven't spoken yet.
Yes, I totally agree with you, pretty much everybody here. The state's done what they wanted to do with that property for so many years now. The city of Laconia needs to have some input on that. Right now, we need to reach out to our representatives. I see one of them's listening right now, Travis O'Hara. We got Greg Huff and all our Mike Borders and all our other representatives. Those are the people we need to be talking to right now. And see where they stand on it, because they're the ones that are going to vote on it first.
Thank you, Counsel Felch. Counsel Susie?
I was going to say exactly what Counsel Felch says. I'd like to see our state representatives from the city of Laconia specifically, but also from our entire delegation here, either come meet with us or express their feelings so to know where they stand. I mean, the county as a whole is going to play a big role in this thing. We've got to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Chini, I saw you had your hand up a little earlier.
You're mute?
Tech savvy, I'm not. I, I just want to agree with Henry that that dialogue is a good idea, but I don't think it's dialogue with the governor's office. I think it's dialogue with the Senate President in particular, who was a moving force behind the commission that's been working the last two or three years and has supported us and that process through all of this. I certainly think we should be having a dialogue with him. I agree with the others that our local area reps, I think it should include the county reps, should be contacted and asked to support the continuation of the commission. But I, I, I don't think, at this point, I, I feel like we got blindsided. You can put some nicer term to it, but that's what happened. I suppose we should have figured it out when, when he vetoed the budget last year, but I, I, I am more than upset about this. And I, I hope we talk with legislative leaders and representatives from Belknap County about the importance of not, not letting HB two pass with that provision in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Chini. Counsel Felch?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that Representative O'Hara has raised his hand if we want to hear.
Yeah, I, I, I see that. I don't know if we're ready to go in that direction yet, but I appreciate that, Counsel Felch. I think at this point, it is still very early on. House Finance is still working on the budget. Crossover will not take place for a couple of weeks, a few weeks now. So, but I, I do think that voicing our concern, maybe in a firm but diplomatic manner with our delegation, as well as the Chair of House Finance, would be appropriate right now. And hopefully, we're going to have some degree of consensus here. It sounds like we're pretty close. But I'd like to perhaps have, keep this as a topic of discussion going forward. But I think we should act within the next, sometime this week to craft something. Moving along on the last item under Mayor's comments. Certainly, we've already heard some input in regards to Motorcycle Week. And let me just get the public and certainly the council up to speed with a couple of things that have transpired over the past couple of weeks. The city manager and I have spoken. As we look at the calendar and we watch this date approach for Motorcycle Week, June 12th through the 20th, and we also watch what's going on in regards to the pandemic and the rollout of the vaccines and the uptake rates, not only here in New Hampshire, but also in throughout the Northeast. Certainly, we are also all aware of there are variants out there that are not as lethal from what best we can understand, but certainly the transmission of the variants seems to be, transmission seems, it seems to be an easier transmission, which is cause for concern. And also where there seems to be some evidence, maybe not enough firm data right now, but also indicating those that have been vaccinated still could be transmitting the virus to others, even though they themselves may not be showing the symptoms of the COVID-19 virus. So I, as we've all know, this, over the past 52 weeks, has been a very, very fluid situation. In the past couple of weeks, the city manager and I have had an opportunity to sit and meet with Chief Biotti at the Fire Department, Chief Canfield of the Laconia Police Department, John Bealan from the Partnership for Public Health. And we've been able to just start some discussions about what will 2021 look like for Laconia Motorcycle Week. And I thought it was prudent that we begin to discuss some contingencies. Certainly, it seems like the data would indicate that we're trending in the right direction. The number of transmissions of the virus seem to be like the curve is bending downward, which is great. The number of hospitalizations and deaths are bending downward as well. It seems like we are in a pretty good place, all things considered. But it also seems we have an awful lot of work continued to do. As of a couple of weeks ago, it seemed to me we were somewhere around 20,000 to 30,000 vaccines in the state per week that were being administered. That was would be the single, those would not be, that was prior to the Johnson and Johnson single dose. So these were just single vaccines, which needed a booster three to four weeks after the initial vaccine. When we did a projection of numbers as to where we were trending towards come June, it would indicate that we were still somewhere around 30% of the population in the state of New Hampshire would have received two vaccinations at that point by Motorcycle Week. So I think that is still a number that probably trends too low, quite frankly. Obviously, we've seen the Johnson and Johnson now come into play. We saw approximately 11,000 administered over the course of three days at the New Hampshire Motor Speedway, which I think is a great indication of the state's growing ability to administer these vaccinations in significant quantities. So I guess, I think these are all data points in my mind, and data points can be used to sort of figure out plans. And should we be looking at a full-blown Laconia Motorcycle Week like we had in 2019? Or should we be looking at a scaled-back version of something that we had in 2020? And let's face it, in 2020, we did an exceptional job, in my mind, as a city, in mitigating the risk associated with COVID-19. But also, I truly believe that luck played a role there as well. How much so? I don't know, but I think we were pretty lucky and we had some really good practices in place and great professionals throughout the city. What has concerned me over the past few months is how do we properly balance public health with the economic impact that might be jeopardized if we don't have a Laconia Motorcycle Week circa 2019 again? I certainly know that our local business community, our local travel and tourist community, particularly in the Weers, depends on a robust Motorcycle Week with high attendance and lots of people coming to our state and visiting. But I am still primarily concerned with public health in the city and throughout Bellknap County. And I don't think we're ready at this point to make a final decision because I think the data still has to come in. We have to still be nimble enough to respond accordingly to it. But, you know, public health is my number one priority here, followed very closely by a local economy. You can't have one really without the other. They are intertwined and you can't separate them in my mind. So I'd be very interested to certainly put this on the agenda for the 22nd as another topic of discussion and that we continue to analyze and gather the data with our professional staff throughout the city to help us make an informed decision. So I appreciate the people that called in and contacted us and with their concerns about Motorcycle Week. I hear you loud and clear, and I appreciate your thoughts and I certainly don't take them lightly. So I'm happy to open that up for further discussion during the course of the mayor's comments this evening if need be. Counsel Felch?
Yeah, I think anything we were to do right now would be premature. It's so much easier to say right now, we're going forward with Motorcycle Week, it normally is, and then we can scale back the closer we get. I think, agree totally with Charlie, that we don't need to make any decisions till the, of April. We didn't make any decisions last year until the end of April. The statistics that I see are trending in a lot different direction than what you're saying. We went from 300,000 affected people to almost 50,000 people in six weeks' time. We've got 90 million injections already. We're trending towards 150 million by the end of this month. So even our president says that all adults will be able to have the vaccine by the end of May, which if everybody has a vaccine, where do we stand? Hurt immunity should be fully in effect by them? So I definitely think we're premature to make any decisions right now.
Thank you, Counsel Felch. Certainly not my intention to push the council to make a decision at this point, but I am pushing us to think very critically about it and trying to take this all into consideration. I appreciate your input, of course. Counsel Cheney?
I tend to agree with Tony, Counsel Felch. I don't want us to rush into a decision. Certainly not on May 22nd. I have a, I have pretty good faith that our police and fire are nimble enough that they can ramp up should we go in June. If in, in April, it doesn't look like things are improving well enough, I would be the first to suggest you're correct that we should look at another date. But I hope we can give it some time. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Cheney. If I may have misspoken, I don't think it's up for, I don't, I think putting it up for a vote in the next meeting is too early as well. If I led you to believe that with my comments, that was a mistake, so. Counsel Hamel?
Yes, thank you. I agree with you, Mayor, on some, along a lot of these things. I think, you know, Motorcycle Week has been set for that in June. And it would have been nice, I think, if the Motorcycle Week Committee contacted the city and say, you know, are these dates okay with you guys? That didn't happen, so it's been set. And I don't mind the time in June that it's been set for the regular time, but I think the only thing is that, what's it going to look like? That's the question. The timeframe in June's okay with me. I think some of the other things we need to look at is, since this is on the city side for paying for all this stuff, is permit by the vendors that we receive, the permits, vendor permits, help pay for this. So I think we need to put something out there to see how many vendors are thinking of coming. Because, you know, the money has to be paid somewhere for police, fire, public works and all these things. So, and as I said, that's all on a fee-based thing through the vendors. It's not tax-generated anymore. But I don't mind the dates that it's scheduled for. The only thing I think is that, what would the event look like? So that's my only thing.
Thank you, Counsel Hamel. Any other, Counsel Felch, is there another counsel who wants to speak who hasn't spoken on this matter?
I just wanted to comment on Counsel Hamel. Being liaison to the committee, I can tell you right now that all the vendors are on board.
So I guess Counsel Felch, that's great to hear and great to know. It's just a matter of what the posture of the city is based on the data it has at the time. So that is, chapter's yet to be written, right? Data's still yet to come in, but certainly I just want, certainly the public and the council to appreciate that there's a bit of a balancing act here. And anyway, try to be very thoughtful about it. And certainly to Counsel, not Counsel, City Manager, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to share a couple of points just for council background. And I know the city clerk used to be involved in the licensing side of Motorcycle Week. So if I get something wrong, she can jump in and straighten me out. To an earlier point that was made by a caller, yes, city staff and public health officials did have a meeting to talk about summer events, of which one was Motorcycle Week. We also talked about Fourth of July and parades and beach capacity and a whole bunch of other things that had nothing to do with Motorcycle Week. And we all wanted to get on the same page and make sure we were looking at the data and understanding everyone's point of view. And from there, we reached out to Motorcycle Week Association and held a meeting specifically with Charlie St. Clair. So there was no desire to do an end run. We were looking at a number of city events, which I think you would expect your city leadership to be doing and trying, as the mayor pointed out, to keep, you know, the public safe and also to be trying to support economic development. To a point that Counsel Felch made, that we didn't make a decision to move Motorcycle Week until April last year, that was correct, but a lot of planning meetings happened and a lot of site plan reviews and information on renting spaces to folks on the boardwalk and lining up police officers from other communities. All were happening in January, February, March. And if you think about it, it really was, you know, next week, it was the day before St. Patrick's Day or two days before St. Patrick's Day, when the governor, you know, called for a meeting with the superintendents and delayed school or stopped school in-person learning for a three-week period. So we had already had a lot of the planning done. We don't have any of that planning going on right now. So we've had some calls from vendors on the boardwalk to know what's going on, but we haven't collected money and we haven't gotten firm compensations. So to Counsel Hamel's point of paying for this, I don't have a great answer for you. If property owners come in for site plan review and they have space for, pick a number, 10 or 20 vendors on their site, that doesn't mean they have 10 or 20 vendors who are lined up and are ready to pay the licensing fee. It just means they're approved to put 10 or 20 vendors on their site. So I don't know how anybody can know that all the vendors are on board and willing to come. I believe the sponsors of Motorcycle Week are on board and ready to come as key sponsors. But I don't know how anybody could know that all the vendors and all the private property owners are all lined up and ready to come for that date. So I'm just sharing with you, the further out we get, we need some direction because we need to, it's more than just police and fire and lining up outside communities. It's porta-potties, it's, you know, getting special events committee meetings done, reviewing applicants, site plan reviews, renting spaces on boardwalks. So there are a lot of logistics and, yes, we've been doing it for 97 years now. I haven't quite been here for all 97 of them and we've got a well-oiled machine and our staff does a great job. But really, when I heard the data of let's not make any decision until the last meeting in April, which would put us to April 26th, you know, we're within six weeks of the event starting at that point and determining what it's going to look like. And again, to Counsel Hamel's point, the financial viability, depending on, you know, how much we receive in vendor, you know, license fees towards what the expense is, you know, that's a big component of trying to make Motorcycle Week self-supporting. So I just wanted to land those thoughts with you that, you know, certainly we have a fantastic staff and a nimble staff, but going until the end of April before there's strong guidance certainly does present some challenges.
Thanks. Thanks, Scott. And that being said, that would conclude my remarks this evening. So I'd like to move on to committee reports, number 17. Are there any committee reports this evening? Counsel Lippman?
The Finance Committee will be meeting later tonight regarding bond issue for the Elm Street project.
Thank you, Counsel Lippman. Counsel Hamel?
Yeah, you skipped over number 16, Council Comments.
Oh, you know, you're absolutely right. I did. After getting the agenda moved around so we could have counsel, my apologies, Council Comments.
Okay, I do have a comment. I just want to speak a little bit about the COVID injections that they did at the racetrack over the weekend. My wife got a call, a text message a little over a week ago about moving up her appointment because it was after, you know, at the end of April. So we did the 211 number and lo and behold, we got an appointment for 10:20 on Saturday to go there. So we went down and the lines were all formed and, you know, they started somewhere around 8:00 or 8:30, given the injections. And I just want to say that I was truly surprised of how well it went. I do, I did hear that there was quite a bit of problems in the afternoon with computers, but, you know, it was the first day. But the organization, all the volunteers, they had there, over 350 volunteers that stood there in the cold all day long, giving injections. They had a tent with eight rows in it for cars to go in. And we were there about two hours and all. And I just want to, you know, say thank you to all those volunteers that did that and actually to the state of New Hampshire too, for putting this on, for people to get extra vaccine into people's arms, which will make a difference.
Thank you, Counsel Hamel. How's Kay doing with the, after the injection?
She's fine, had no problems at all. She got the Johnson and Johnson.
Great.
No, it went very well.
Good to hear. Thank you. Counsel Felch?
Yes, I've had several complaints about Jefferson Street and Mass Ave that are, especially Jefferson is almost impassable. Something needs to be done with these two streets. I dare anybody to ride down them and tell me different. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Is it parking or snow?
It's the condition of the roads.
Okay.
They are absolutely terrible.
Yeah, take a ride on Summer Street, Tony.
I have. This is worse.
Thank you, Counsel Felch. Any other counsel comments? Seeing none, we can now move along to committee reports, any additional committee reports? How about liaison reports? Counsel Hamel, how's everything at the Colonial?
Colonial is still going very well. We have the people there for, they've been here roughly a week now for the terrazzo floors. So that's quite a process to get those repaired. Port lighting out of Seabrook is filing, installing audio equipment, amplifiers, speakers have gone up. They're working on a stage. They've been doing a lot of sanding on the Canal Street side for the final finish on the floors. So things are really moving along. The windows are all installed now and the staging is up because they're doing the finished wood trim in the front of the building. And I would think even maybe by the end of this week, that staging may be coming down. So it's going very well. Copper's all in, except for a small area, so it's looking good.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Hamel, for your work. Any other liaison reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to number 19, which is citizens' request to comment on current agenda items. This is the opportunity for citizens who have tuned in, who would like to speak to items on tonight's agenda. Now would be the appropriate time.
Mr. Mayor, Travis O'Hara has raised his hand.
Ah, thank you. Welcome, Representative O'Hara. Welcome, Representative O'Hara.
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Very well, thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you, um,
Your patience, appreciate it.
Oh, that's, that's all right. I just raised my hand during HB2 time because I wanted to, um, speak to, uh, reach out to you guys each individually, to reach out to me with either or about, um, the governor and what he wants to do with the state school. I have direct connections with him a little bit, so I would like to talk to him more about it and understand the city, you guys and the city constituents' position on that land. Cause it's been there for a while, not much has been done with it since I was a kid. I mean, it's looked the same forever. And I would just like the city to get a, I, I don't know what's been done is basically what I'm trying to say. I don't know what the Lakes Region Committee, what, what'd you say that was, Mr. Mayor?
Lakes Region Redevelopment, um, Commission. Uh, I'll tell you, I, I appreciate you offering to get involved in this, Representative O'Hara. That means an awful lot. It means a lot that you're here and, um, at the meeting this evening. I am more than willing to, um, set time aside to sit down with you and perhaps the city manager and go over the, uh, the, at least the last decade of history there uh, and let you know what's going on. So if there's a time that you want to, um, you know, put something together, I'm, I'm sure that, uh, we, we will make plenty of time for you to let you know our, our thoughts on this.
Okay, I'll reach out with the city manager if that's okay, set time.
That would, that would be great and greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
Good night.
Mr. Mayor, no one else has raised their hand.
Thank you very much. Moving along to number 20, should be the city manager's report and I'll turn it over to Scott Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So included in your packets for this meeting in March, the first meeting, uh, we have the financial and operational trends. Top of the first page, you'll see the new construction value from building permits. So again, we continue to bump up a little bit. We have one month left in the assessing year, which runs April 1st to March 31st. So the data you're seeing there is through 11 months of the year as of the end of February. We're at $34 million net increase of new permits over demolition value. Last year at this time, we were just short of 15 million, so we're double. We've got portions of a couple of larger projects in, but there's still several large projects that, um, have partially begun or will be coming in in stages that we're still waiting for. So there certainly is an opportunity for that number, um, to increase, uh, for the month of March. Uh, or also some, some hits coming in right up to the beginning of the new assessing year, starting April 1st. Uh, you can see the fire and rescue call data for February this year is basically comparable to last year. Uh, we had a little bit of uptick in welfare, uh, for the month of February, uh, that was tied to a couple of specific kind of unique items that the city needed to respond to. Police Department activity also was up over the same period, uh, last year and in, in a number of, uh, activities that they've had. Property tax collection at the bottom of page two, we continue to run strong, so over 98%. Which if you look at, including, uh, this year's number, the prior seven years, um, is at the highest percentage collected point, um, that we've been at. So that's a positive trend to see. We continue to be strong in, uh, the motor vehicle, uh, registrations. Uh, we're, we're two-thirds of the way through the year and we're spot on with two-thirds, um, of our number there. The overtime report is listed and broken down. And again, I just remind you, that can be a little bit skewed with, um, various reimbursements that we've had for some staffing at various points. Some of it shows up as overtime, some of it that is, um, planned scheduled details. So for instance, at the Doobie Building or maybe up at the Community College, doesn't necessarily show up as overtime, even though it is overtime. Uh, because it's scheduled detail, it shows up in wages. So there's some nuances to it. So this year in particular, this is going to be a, a trickier report to read and make sense of because of all the various things that are going on in the reimbursement programs. But, uh, Glenn Smith, our Finance Director, does a great job of providing, uh, the backup for the numbers. We've provided you some, some numbers about a month or so ago of where we were through the year end. And we'll continue to make those, uh, those numbers available for you, probably on every other month type of basis. So you can stay current on those. Impact fees trending up a little bit on the bottom of page four. And then when you get into the EMS tracking, again, a little bit of a lag for the February numbers in this report because of the earlyness of the meeting, uh, both last month and this month, uh, the second Monday was the earliest date. It could be on the eighth. So, um, there will be more calls that happened in February that will show up, uh, next month, just because the billing cycle, um, in our meeting cycle will line up a little bit better. The storm pages, um, for winter storms, again, not a lot of big events in February, a lot of small freezing, uh, more nuisance events. A lot of them did happen to occur on weekends, so that drove up the overtime a little bit more, even though when you look at the overall cost of materials and outside contractors were still in very good shape. So out of the Public Works budget, uh, there is more than 60,000 in overtime in their budget. We kind of allocate internally that 60,000 of that line item is what we expect to expend to winter maintenance. So we're, we're pushing up on that, uh, but you can see that the balance available, both in the outside contract and in our general winter maintenance line item, is still very strong. So, um, I'm old enough and smart enough to know not to make any predictions of when winter will end. But leading into Counsel Foulch's question on, um, on, uh, Jefferson and Mass, uh, temperatures look good for the final two days of this week on Thursday and Friday, where we finally have some warmth. And Public Works will be firing up the hot box, uh, if you will, to start getting some patches out to try to do anything sooner. Just would have been a, a real waste of time and energy and nothing would have stuck with the, with the temperatures that we've had the last couple of weeks. So at the end of this week, it looks to be warm, it looks to be dry. Those two streets are definitely on the list. In addition, just to, uh, a little bit more to that, um, on the major Elm Street, uh, paving project, which also is including water and sewer, which you're already aware of. And the Finance Committee is meeting on the, uh, on the bond for the paving portion later on tonight. As Counsel Lippman had mentioned, both Jefferson and Mass are part of that major repaving over in Lakeport area, which is also Elm Street, Fairmont School Street, uh, and some sidewalks in there. So in addition to, um, getting a big Band-Aid, hopefully the end of this week, uh, they will see major improvements in that paving project, um, later on this construction season. Uh, one quick item and one maybe a little bit longer item for you. I'm reappointing Leonard Minor, Lenny Minor, to the, uh, Board of Assessors for a three-year term, which would end March of 2024. Lenny has served for several terms now, a very active, a good contributor, and we're pleased that he's willing to stay on. I'm pleased that he's willing to stay on and you should be too, uh, to continue to serve on the Board of Assessors. And believe it or not, our cable franchise renewal agreement with Atlantic Broadband, um, has run through just about 10 years from when we last did it. And it's on the docket to start the franchise renewal agreements. I, I, I remember thinking to myself, and I'm not sure whether I ever shared it publicly, but when I finished up my time in, in Dover and started in Laconia, it was July of 2011 and we had just wrapped up the franchise, uh, the cable franchise renewal agreement in Dover. And I can resolve, recall saying, this was one of the driest, most boring processes that is stacked in the cable company's favor under federal law. And I'm so glad that I'm done with this for 10 years and I came to Laconia. And what was one of the first things we were doing? We were doing cable franchise renewal agreements in 2011, 2012. So I, I didn't time that too well and lo and behold, here we are doing it again. For those who haven't, uh, run through this process before, um, all communities are required to have a cable franchise agreement with a cable provider. Basically, it focuses on things like customer service, areas covered, where they have to do build out, if there are customer service complaints, all those items, you can negotiate, um, some, some tech fees in there, but it's very limited. And we'll go through this process. We, we are working again with all of our neighboring communities who are all on the same schedule we are, because that will save us some money in working with one attorney and the franchise renewal agreement in each community contributing, whether, rather than each community going in on its own. There's a formal process, uh, in federal law, again, as I stated, um, that has, uh, the outline as to how franchise renewal agreements occur and what can and cannot be negotiated. We will hold public hearings so that the public can chime in on, um, their perspective of, of our cable service provider. The two things that everybody wants to talk about and wishes they could talk about at a public hearing are the channels that are offered and how they're bundled and the price of cable TV. And under federal law, those are two things that we cannot negotiate. We have no input on that. And I know it's frustrating for our residents, as is probably frustrating for you, you and me, but, um, just kind of setting the tone there. The other thing that sometimes gets confusing for people is they'll look to the city on issues they may be having with a provider on their internet or their telephone or their emails. Even though it's the same carrier, in this particular situation, our franchise agreement is for cable services only. So the city, while we can certainly try to assist and reach out, has no, no legal, um, agreement in place or no, no ability to go ahead and push buttons on concerns over brought, over internet speed or over telephone service or interruptions and that type of stuff. Those are regulated, it's my understanding, by the Public Utilities Commission. So it is narrowly focused, but we will be working with, again, our neighboring communities and a well-respected attorney, um, to, uh, to start that process. And you'll be hearing more about that in the coming months. Finally, in conjunction with bringing you this information, I did reach out to Comcast, who was also working under a, a, an almost identical franchise agreement. It is not identical, but it's very, very similar. And, um, within franchise agreements, you can't be more favorable with, to one company over, over the other. So they're, they're both basically the same agreements with the same stipulation on how they have to build out and provide service. While not wanting to give away trade secrets of Comcast or business secrets as to where they are in, in their customer acquisition of, of new customers, since they've done some build out in Laconia, they were able to share that they have basically run wire past over 2,000 properties that are in a position, um, to be connected at this point. I know from speaking with Comcast in the past, that as they build out a certain neighborhood, they are doing targeted mailings and some door hangers and maybe even knocking on doors, but you know, maybe not in so much in a COVID time to let people know that their neighborhood is wired and, and give them options so that folks can, can look at, um, what's available. It's very rare for a community to have more than one cable provider, to be honest with you. There's probably less than 10 communities in the whole state that have two cable, um, options available for them. So definitely unique, uh, and Comcast did indicate that they are on track to complete their build out in Laconia by the end of this calendar year. They are having some challenges with one other utility and some telephone pole replacements on, um, poles that one utility owns that, um, maybe isn't being as user-friendly to another utility who might be in competition with them. Um, and they're working through those and working through the appeal process if they feel they're being held up on some pole replacements that need to occur in certain sections. So, uh, that'll conclude my report tonight. I can take questions on any of the above.
Counsel Cheney.
I was wondering if I could, uh, encourage the manager to revisit the overtime report from two perspectives. One, it's, I'd like to see sort of comparisons of apples to apples and oranges to oranges. I understand each agency has some things that, uh, are, are not shared with other agencies. But there are a lot of things like sick and hurt and, uh, holiday pay and that sort of thing that should be the same in all the agencies. The other question I have is, I, I, I think the, the present report borders on elder abuse, uh, when it comes to trying to be able to read the darn thing. And I was kind of hoping he could get somebody to type it. I understand the typewriters are rare, but perhaps some clerical person could be kind enough to type this in a type set I could read, uh, without a magnifying glass. Thank you.
Well, you, you, you caught me, Counsel. I was really hoping this would drive towards a younger counsel. I'm kidding with that. We will, uh, we will, we will look at that, um, you know, in so, in some cases, um, it, it, it doesn't always line up. And, and, and we, we can work over your apples to apples and oranges to oranges. In some situations, I'll just pick Public Works, for instance, if somebody's out sick, there's, there's no one there to backfill. All of our crew works on Monday through Friday, eight to four. So there's no holiday pay because they don't work the holidays. There's no shift overtime because we don't have an extra DPW employee sitting there to come in and fill a, a, a shift, uh, because they're not working seven days a week, 24 hours a day, scheduled type of thing. So there are, there are a few nuances. Police and fire should track more closely for you, um, and I will work on the font for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cheney. Thank you very much, uh, Scott. If there are no other questions or comments for the city manager, we'll move right along then to, uh, new business. Under, under 21A, I'll try to be as thorough, yet concise as I can with this, um, which is a request to submit a grant application to the State's Transportation Alternative Program for the design and construction of a multi-use rail and sidewalk improvements on Elm Street from Elm Street Bridge to Hickory Stick Lane. Uh, the state's TAP is currently funded under the new FAST Act, Fixing America's Surface Transportation System Act. Uh, the goal of the federally funded transportation alternatives program is to provide choices for non-motorized users that are safe, reliable and convenient. Eligible projects include construction, planning and design of infrastructure-related projects and systems that will provide safe routes for non-drivers, including children, older adults and individuals with disabilities to access daily needs. The sidewalk improvements on Elm Street are in conjunction with a sewer, drain and roadway improvement project from Franklin Street to Hickory Stick Lane. The project includes constructing a multi-use trail in the same corridor as existing sidewalks and bringing the adjoining sidewalks up to ADA standards. The project will provide additional and improved pedestrian crossings at Levitt Park and the Elm Street School by installing rectangular, rapid flashing beacons. The grant application requires a letter of support from the applying municipality's governing body. Public Works requests that the city council authorize the city manager to sign the grant application and authorize the mayor to sign the attached letter of support from the city council for the grant. The fiscal impact, the city is responsible for 20% matching funds. The design and construction for the multi-use trail improvements is estimated at 1.25 million, making the city's share 250,000. The city's share would be funded by the annual street repairs capital improvement program. Scott, the only thing, I, I would have a question for you. This is the, doing this type of work is something that traditionally the steep, the street repairs capital improvement program would fund? Anyway?
Yes, uh, for general sidewalk repairs and those types of things, it would be in the general fund. Uh, this street's a little bit unique where we've got sidewalks on both sides, uh, and obviously it's fairly heavily traveled from Lakeport all the way, in this case, past the Elm Street, Street School and down a little bit to Hickory Stick Lane. One side of it would be more of a traditional sidewalk and, and, uh, my understanding from Wes Anderson, our Public Works Director, and, uh, he's on here. So if he sees me say something wrong, he can raise his hand and we can get him in. But the other, the other trail is going to be a little bit, um, wider so that there's an opportunity for, uh, you know, not only handicap accessible, but for bikes to be able to pass somebody who's walking at the same time on the path, but really to try to give options, improve the, uh, the sidewalks with the ADA compliance and the safety with the, uh, with the flashing beacon. So it's a very comprehensive project that would tie in nicely. And, and yes, our, our funds for everything from sidewalks, paving, guardrails, fences is all in the, in the operating budget under the Capitol.
And what's the, what's the timeframe for this, assuming that we, we receive this?
As far as getting notification or as far as construction?
Construction.
Uh, we would be looking to do that in conjunction with the timing of water, sewer, uh, the paving and then building the sidewalks at the same time. So, um, I would think the lion's share of this could be completed this season, maybe with some punch list items to be completed early next year. But this is a, this season, construction projects.
Thank you. Counsel Lippman.
Like to ask a question of the manager, in terms of use of impact fees for purposes of, there's some that could be used for, uh, as to the street kind of component of it, but also if it's improving the access to the schools, uh, and safety there too, is there some of that that we could use as well to help finance the 250?
Sure, we could certainly ask the schools that. I know that they've got some funds that they're planning on using for a project this spring, but I think going forward beyond there, we could certainly make a request that this ties into, um, you know, s- school access options and safety for, for students. So certainly an ask I could make.
Thank you, Counsel Lippman. And thank you, Scott. Okay, so the staff recommendation on this is, uh, city council authorizes the city manager to submit, submit an application to NHDOT's Transportation Alternative Program, the Elm- the Elm Street Pedestrian Accessibility Improvements Project. City Council also recommending that City Council authorizes the mayor to sign a letter of support from the city council to accompany the grant application. This report was submitted by Krista Larson, who is Assistant Public Works Director. We're looking for two motions here. The first to move that the city council authorize the city manager to sign and submit a grant application to NHDOT for the Elm Street Pedestrian Accessibility Improvements Project. So made by Counselor Felch. Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Hamel. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counsel Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
That's six votes in the affirmative that motion passes. The second motion we'd be looking for is to move that the city council authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support from the city council for the Elm Street Pedestrian Accessibility Improvements Project. So made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Cheney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counsel Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Thank you very much, councilors, and certainly look forward to really significant upgrade to sidewalks. Elm Street. Moving along to number 21B. This is the first reading of Resolution 2021-04 relative to the acceptance of the New Hampshire Department of Safety Homeland Security Grant and the amount of $250,000 to fund a command vehicle for the Laconia Police Department and to schedule a public hearing for March 22, 2021. This command vehicle will serve as a mobile command center that would allow the Laconia PD to enhance operational communications with partnering emergency services and police departments during major events such as Motorcycle Week and Pumpkin Festival and during active threat situation, including acts of terrorism. Recent full-scale active threat exercises highlighted a gap in our ability to operationalize communications to prevent or minimize an active threat. The only other vehicle available is through Homeland Security and Concord and must be reserved ahead of time, which is not conducive to an immediate need. The New Hampshire Department of Safety notified the city that its grant application had been awarded in late 2020. The entire cost of this mobile command center is covered by the 2020 Homeland Security Grant, and there is no local match requirement. Those are magic words, aren't they? Staff recommends that a public hearing be scheduled in relation to acceptance for this grant. And this report was submitted by Glenn Smith. So this will be a series of three motions right now. The first one would be a motion to waive a reading of Resolution 2021-04 in its entirety and to read by title only. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counsel Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
That's six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Looking for a second motion to move a first reading of Resolution 2021-04 relative to the acceptance of the New Hampshire Department of Safety Homeland Security Grant and the amount of $250,000 to fund a command vehicle for the Laconia Police Department. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Felch. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counsel Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
That's six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. And finally, I'd be looking for a motion to move to schedule a public hearing on March 22, 2021 during the regular council meeting to gather public input prior to adoption. So made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Cheney. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counsel Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
That's six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Thank you very much, councilors. So moving along right now, that would conclude our formal agenda items here. I would be looking to move into non-public session under RSA 91A colon three, Roman two. Consideration of the acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, which if discussed in public, would likely benefit a party or parties whose interests are adverse to those of the general community. During the course of this meeting, we will be recessing for a non-public non-meeting in regards to labor negotiations as well. I would like the record to reflect and the public to know that when we come back into public session, it will only be for the purposes of adjourning tonight's meeting.
Mr. Mayor? With respect to after that adjournment, the Finance Committee would be holding its meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding me of that, too. Okay, so we take a vote right now to go into non-public.
Believe you need someone to make the motion and second, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure that happened.
I don't believe it has. Counsel Cheney has made the motion, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counsel Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, we'll be going into non-public session.
All right, so I need a motion to come out of non-public session. So made by Council Cheney, seconded by Council Fouch. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Council Cheney?
Yes.
I'll come back for Council Sucey. It looks like it's getting loaded. Council Lippman?
Yes.
Council Haynes?
Yes.
Council Hamel?
Yes.
Council Felch?
Yes.
Council Susie, motion to come out of non-public?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative. We're back into public session. You know, motion to seal the minutes of the non-public session for six months, I would suggest. So made by Council Cheney, seconded by Council Hamel. Any discussion? Seeing none at us. Manager to call the roll.
Council Cheney?
Yes.
Council Susie?
Yes.
Council Lippman?
Yes.
Council Haynes?
Yes.
See, this is tough because you're on like bridge. You're not sol sitting in the order usually what I got to figure out who's next. Council Hamel? Especially at 10 o'clock at night. Council Felch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative. Minutes are sealed for six months. So I would like to adjourn. Public portion of City Council meeting of March 8, 2021 at 10:02 PM.